For this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Item two and three, Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation. The United States Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pinkich. Please rise.
Father, Heavenly Father, as always, we thank you for each and every blessing that you've given to us. We thank you for blessing our city, our state, and our country. We pray for your guidance and direction to all of our leaders, Father, on whatever level of government that they serve. We just pray that all we do would glorify you and would be pleasing in your sight for us these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, that will be just as one.
Honored the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item number four, the citizens forum. Persons desired to address the council must limit their presentation to more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council members or employees as well as individual personnels are not appropriate for the citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter five, five, one of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there is anyone who wishes to address the council, please state your name and address for the record.
How y'all doing? My name is Gary Harris. My address is nineteen fourteen East Tudor, Paris, Texas, seven, five, four, six, oh. And I'm here today on behalf of the community. We have on the west side, the south side, the southeast side, northeast, southeast. We have grown up trees. We don't have any type of activities for the kids to participate in the parks. All the playgrounds that had, we had in Seventh Street, it was taken up. Miss Maxie, that's a pasture, that's not a park. We need, we need the same thing that y'all have over on the way, on the east side. We need, we need better water lines. We need, we need all these old buildings, Westgate for one, gone. We need, we need all the old houses that the drug addicts is sleeping in and living in, gone. We need our community cleaned up like everyone else's community because that's keeping the value down on a lot of them people's houses and property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Yes, my name is Pamela Lewis and I live on one thirty-eight West Provine Street in Paris, Texas. And I have a ditch on the side of my house and I mean, it's just cluttered. And I had been calling them to tell them to go, to come and clean it out. And what they do is they come and they did guttles. And then, I don't know if we got anything with the water bill. But my water bill, when I, my landlord had it, it was forty-five dollars. And my neighbors across the street from me, theirs is just forty-five dollars. But mine's, I stay on the other side. My water bill last month was a hundred and thirty-five. And then I turn around, I got another and I gotta pay the eighteenth, it's a hundred and forty-four. And I complained to them because I told them to come out and put me a new water meter. And they said he did, but like I told them, it's not no dirt or nothing around it, so you didn't. And plus, they, when they come through, they don't even look over at my water meter. They look at theirs, but they don't check mine's. And every month, I got a hundred and some water meter, water bill, which it was forty-five before when my landlord had it. It was in his name and it was forty-five, but when I got it in my name, it's been a hundred and some every month.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
The citizens forum is now closed. Consent agenda, items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council. With such approval, to all items appearing on the consent agenda, a council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and reconsidered in a separate item. Does any member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
I'll second, all opposed? Motion carries?
All in favor.
Okay. Item number thirteen. Approve an ordinance approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee, ACSC, and the Atmos Energy Corp., Mayor Texas Vision regarding the company's twenty twenty-three rate review mechanism filings. Declaring existing rates to be unreasonable. Adopting tariffs to reflect rate objections consistent with the negotiated settlement. Funding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to just reach a reasonable in the public interests. Approving a tax established in a benchmark for the person, for the pensions and retiree medical benefits requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses. Determining that the resolution was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Adopting a savings clause, declaring effective date, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel. Staff, do you have a presentation, please?
Atmos, Atmos, thirteen. Okay. Atmos filed for a rate increase that totaled a hundred and sixty-five thousand, wait, wait a minute, one sixty-five point nine million. Get my zeros in the right place. In additional revenues, and that was system-wide. The rate request was reviewed by consultants from the Atmos City Steering Committee. Paris is a member of that group. And after reviewing that and negotiating with Atmos on some things that they thought should not be allowed, they came to an agreement for a negotiated rate that the steering committee thinks is fair. And so the ordinance that's before you reflects those negotiated rates. And those rates vary from a four point four three percent increase to a seven point six six percent increase, depending on whether it's residential, commercial, and the volume that those customers are using. But we recommend its approval after having been reviewed by the steering committee.
Any discussion? Want to hear a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries? Seven, zero. Item number fourteen, discuss an act on a resolution approving a tax abatement agreement with Hudamaki, Inc. Pursuant to the twenty twenty census, the subject property located in the city of Paris, Lamar County, Texas, included within an enterprise zone, which pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter two, three, zero, three, and the Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act, Texas Tax Code, Section three, one, two, point two, zero, one, one, also constitutes designation of the area in a reinvestment zone. The investment zone is inside northwest Loop two, eight, six, in the northwest Paris Census Block Group four, eight, two, seven, seven, zero, 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 six, zero, zero, one, zero, three, two, for a planned investment to include fifty-five million dollars in real property investments and thirty million dollars in personal property for the expansion of current operations. Staff, do you have a presentation, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm Maureen Hammond, representing the Paris Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for having me here tonight. As many of you know, Hudamaki has been a quarter, cornerstone of the corporate community here in Paris for fifty years. Actually, the plant manager, Adam Routen, reminded me that today is actually fifty-one years this year. So over the past three years, I've had the pleasure of working with Adam as Hudamaki's plant manager. Our conversations have often centered on growth and expansion plans. In recent months, these discussions have taken shape with the introduction of Aaron Aversman of Ernst &amp; Young as, acting as the site consultant for Hudamaki. Today Hudamaki employs nearly two hundred people and occupies roughly three hundred thousand square feet of manufacturing space. To meet customer demands and advance a company's strategic vision, Hudamaki is considering a significant expansion. This expansion would create eighty new jobs and drive an estimated investment of eighty-five million into our local economy, positioning it as one of the most significant capital expansion projects in Paris over the last decade. If approved, their expansion plus current operations today would support nearly one billion in total economic impact over the next ten years. Given the scale of Hudamaki's investment, the Paris Economic Development Corporation has approved the allocation of funds that would support expanding transportation infrastructure, providing a direct connection from the facility to Loop two, eighty-six. This includes procuring a twenty-five acre parcel located to the north of the plant and funding a portion of the new access road. In total, the PEDC has committed a million dollars towards securing this project in Paris, Texas. This expansion project was a competitive project. Paris was considered along with other locations of Hudamaki. So in addition to what the PEDC is offering in incentives, we are here tonight requesting the approval of a ten-year de-escalating abatement from the city. Stephanie Harris, city attorney, has worked very hard on drafting the agreement before you. Thank you, Stephanie, for all your hard work. We have also asked the same terms and de-escalating schedule of the county. Presented today at the county commissioners' court meeting, they did approve this abatement agreement. So today we are asking, we're requesting the approval of the abatement agreement and for you to join us in supporting Hudamaki's growth as they strengthen their legacy here in Paris, Texas. Joining me tonight is Adam Routen, the plant manager of Hudamaki, as well as Aaron and Brennan from Ernst &amp; Young. Happy to answer any questions, and I know that Adam would like to make some brief comments. But before he comes up, is there any questions that I can answer?
No questions. I think it's a great win for the city of Paris. Hard work that the PEDC put in, the city, county, everybody worked together because it's important to have jobs here in Paris, Texas. And so we just appreciate the hard work and appreciate Hudamaki for considering Paris.
Thank you, council member. Eighty new jobs, driving eighty-five million in capital investment. That, that's huge. I know I use that a lot, but this is an incredible project for this community. So appreciate your consideration and thank you for letting us present tonight.
Absolutely.
Good evening and thank you for letting me stand before you. I'm Adam Routen, the plant manager at Hudamaki. And as Maureen expressed, we've, we've worked very long for a project, actually predates her. I've been working on this six years to try to get expansion in Paris. So this is a really wonderful opportunity. Just to let you know, I'm, I'm, I'm local. I grew up in this area, spent forty-five of my fifty-three years right here in the Lamar County area of Paris. And so this is not just another project for me, this is home. And where we, we wanna not just grow, but we wanna create good jobs and opportunities for people. For fifty-one years, people have been paying their mortgages and putting their kids through school, working at our plant. And we, we intend to keep that going for the long foreseeable future. So thank you for your, the opportunity to stand here tonight and your consideration. And if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have a question, but Mr. Routen, I just want to say thank you for what you have done at Hudamaki. I know many of us have taken tours of Hudamaki throughout our times, whether we've been on council or not. And it says a lot about you and your integrity as an individual that's, that's from Paris and actually, you know, leading the team there. So we're really excited about this opportunity. And as Mr. Savage said earlier, I mean, this is a really exciting time. And excited to have the opportunities for our citizens to be able to have greater opportunities for employment and adding on to a wonderful company. So very excited. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Routen. Item number fifteen, receive a presentation from Mayor Hughes. I'm sorry, my apologies. Is there any discussion?
I want to mirror what Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem said as well, and not to try to drag the meeting out, but we appreciate very, very much. It's a big deal and the EDC really did stellar on this. So glad we're, we could get it pushed across the finish line.
Is there any further discussion? Want to hear a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Seven, zero. Item number fifteen, receive a presentation from Mayor Hughes about the West Paris Town Hall Project. Okay. In May of this year, shortly after I was elected into office, I had a conversation with, with Mayor Pro Tem, Pinkich, about the west side of Paris. We both were receiving extensive phone calls about the concerns of the west side. And we're just, in general, the west side in total. He had the same concerns and phone calls and I did as well. So we decided we would get with the city manager and assistant city manager to find a way that, how as a city, we can address these concerns. And the biggest concern that was pointed out to both of us in separate instances was the west side felt like they were left behind. And that is totally unacceptable for you to feel that way. We know that the west side of Paris, a lot of things haven't been taken care of for years, long before any of us were on council. But it is our responsibility now, as the mayor of Paris, it's, it's my full responsibility. I'm a city council member, so it is my district part of it, and Mayor Pro Tem. And I think Mr. Savage has some areas in there as well. So we decided that we were gonna have some town hall meetings. Then I give you an opportunity to, to address all of your concerns. Because, you know, here we have the citizens forum and generally you have two minutes to talk on it. And that's certainly not enough time for you to address your concerns individually about the west side of Paris. So we're gonna have, I think maybe five town hall meetings. We're gonna be addressing the housing, the development, the safety, code, streets, and anything else that you deem necessary to be brought up to our attention for us to address. Now collectively, it's gonna take all of us to address this because the city will not be able to do this alone. But we want to hear from you, we want to understand what your concerns are, and we strongly encourage you. We're gonna put out the, the information for the town halls. And it certainly is not gonna be in one area, one building, it's gonna be in several different locations. And it's gonna be on the west side of town, so you don't have to drive on the east side or the south side. We're trying to make this as easy as possible. But we strongly encourage you to attend these town hall meetings to address your concerns. Because if you don't show up, then we certainly won't understand. Now certainly, we, we see what the problems are. Physically, we can see it, the overgrown lots, the trees, the streets, the ditches. But we need to hear from the taxpayers and from our constituents. So I'm gonna give Mayor Pro Tem the opportunity to say something and also Mr. Savage, if he desires to do so. And then Mr. Path will, will close.
Mayor Hughes, you, you did a fantastic job in presenting that. And, you know, just to add on to that, you know, a lot of constituents I've talked to have felt disenfranchised or they feel like they've not been heard. And the main intent behind this, this exercise is to really understand, hey, let's pinpoint where are our opportunity areas? And let's figure out what can we do? And I can strongly attest to this, that, you know, our city staff in, in our meetings have said, we want to help. We want to figure out what is this, what's going on? And so this is our opportunity now as citizens to come together and, and start from the west, head over to different areas of our community and try this thing out and really come together. I mean, this is, I think this is something that's been needing, needing to happen for a very long time. And finally, we've got, we've got the tools and the folks in, in place to be able to make this happen. And so now is the time that we, we should unite as a community and figure out, hey, is, is it, is it the trees? Is it crime? Is it, what, what is it that's, that's making you feel like, hey, we can do, we can do better as a community? So we're excited for this opportunity. We really want to come together and, and figure out, you know, what are the issues? And let's move forward and, and act on those and make, make our community better, make it united. So I, I yield my time and Mr. Savage, I want to hand it off to you, sir.
Well, yes, I want to say something. I didn't know about this initiative, I just found out about it. And I have a significant part of West Paris in my district, so I should have known. But I encourage people all the time to call, because you're taxpayers, you have the right to call and complain about things that you feel that are not right. But I would also encourage you to come with facts, come with specifics, not general, you know, just general information. Come with specifics and the facts of the matter. Because, you know, we know that some areas are, you have trees overhanged, you have private lots that's overgrown. You have some city trustee lots that's overgrown. But with city staff, they are doing their best to take care of those lots, I know that for a fact. But we also have to, as, as Mayor said, we also have to invest in our own community as we do in the Mount Piscobaptist Church area. We've made a significant difference in our area ourselves and we pay that dollar ourselves. It's not that much money, but we pay to mow ourselves. So if you, you want your area to look better, we can. Me and Star Moore started an initiative in central Paris with the facility. We asked the city to help us out with that and take care of it. And then we would take care of it going forward, but that's what our dime. And we just want to make our areas look good, you know, just call out one area, Boys and Girls Club. We want to make that look good, we want our kids to walk in and, and make sure that they feel, feel good about the establishment that they're walking into, just like they would if they were walking into the Love Civic Center. But we also have to invest in our community to make it look good. And we talk a lot about investing in our community. Well, let's step up and invest in our community and make that happen. But also, the city has a responsibility to make certain things happen because we pay taxes. So come up, use your two minutes, and like Mayor said, that's not a lot of time, but you can also call. Because if you never call, they never have that complaint, so they never have data to go by. So when one single person come up and say, well, I, I've been complaining about this for years. Okay, who are you complaining to? So complain to the city. That's what they have the phones here for, they have emails, email us, all of us, we represent y'all. So email us, call us, or whatever, lodge your complaints and we will do our best to make things happen. But you do have to understand that your complaint is not the only complaint. We have complaints all over Paris that we have to take care of. So it's not just one single complaint. So if we don't get to it in time, bear with us, just keep calling us, keep talking to us, and we will do the best we can to make it happen. But you cannot think that your complaint is the only complaint. But do come with specifics and facts.
Yes, just, I want to make a point to the citizens of Paris that I don't want them to think that we're just concerned about the west side. It's very important that I address that. The west side requires the immediate attention right now. And then we'll work our way back to different, different districts. So I just want to make that very clear. We, we just have to start with the west side because it immediately requires our attention right now. And then we'll move forward with the other districts as, as our councilman directs us. And councilwoman.
Mr. Path.
Just speaking some logistics, first off, I'd like to thank the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem for kicking this process off. This is their initiative and so very excited to work with them on this, staff. And some logistics here, we will be sending out a press release fairly soon. I foresee this week is the plan, but we'll get that out soon. We've developed an agenda, we're currently working out dates. We'll be, we'll be approaching some facilities, particularly working with the schools and see if we can identify a large facilities that we can, that we can have, house people to come and meet here. So details are coming. And so please pay attention to our social media, our Facebook, our Facebook pages and for more information. And we'll be putting that out here soon. And so I've, next few weeks, I foresee, so, but we plan to have these in the, in the fall and winter of twenty twenty-three is the plan. Hope to have them done by, by the close of this year is the plan. We're gonna try to scatter, scatter, scatter the, the time so we don't all hit one shift of, of work. We try to do different times of the day, different days of the week, and, and also spread these out. They're not gonna be one week, they're gonna be over several weeks in case people on vacations or people can't make it. So, and also you're not, you're not limited to the one that you make it. So, and also, you're not, you're not limited to the one that you live near. We're trying to put these things across different places. And so, if you'd like to come to the one nearest you, great. If you can't make that one, come to another one. And we're gonna try to have these about five, as the mayor has said, five of these. And so, different, different spots of town. And so, if you can't make one, make the next one if you can. So, but more information coming soon. So, please pay attention to our social media.
Can I say something there, Mr. Path? And Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, keep me in the loop. As I stated before, a lot of southwest Paris is in my district. So, I want to be kept in the loop as well.
With all due respect, information hasn't shared with the council, but yes.
I just wanted to add, you know, just like what Mr. Path has said, please, you know, spread, spread the word because that's how we're gonna get the most impact out of these, these, this process, right? So, go out, as you hear that, hey, we're having one in this area, we're having one here. It's open. It's open to anyone to be able to come up and speak and have their voice heard. And if you feel shy about it, that's okay too. We'll have cards in the back where you can, you can post your questions, any concerns that you have. We want to, we genuinely, from the bottom of our heart, we want to understand and hear you. But the only way to do that is to either stand up and speak or write it down. So, we want to, we want to be able to help. We all, as I can speak very strongly, with all of these individuals up here, we genuinely just want to help our community. So, this is our time and let's, let's do it right. Spread that word. Come out. Let's have a great showing and let's, let's come together.
All right. Thank you. Item number sixteen, discuss an act on the ordinance providing for the repeal of chapter eight, article eight point zero two, curfew of children, including section eight point zero two point zero three one through eight point zero two point zero three nine of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paris, Texas, declaring the same to be null and void, of no effect, repealing of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, making other findings and provisions and providing an effective date. Staff.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council.
As y'all know, the city currently has a ordinance in place that governs the daytime and nighttime curfew of children under the age of seventeen. As a matter of fact, in February this year, y'all reauthorized this ordinance to continue. Well, in June of this year, the Texas legislation passed House Bill eighteen nineteen, which repealed the authority of a political subdivision to adopt or enforce juvenile curfews. So, this law takes effect September one. So, to be compliant with that, that law, we're asking tonight to repeal this, this ordinance.
Is there any discussion?
I want to just state my opinion on this. I would be remiss if I did not speak on this, but it is very frustrating to see our state representatives and senators taking away our power from the city to be able to really do our work, do what we're, we're voted to do. And so, I apologize. I'm venting on this, but it is very frustrating to be voted in to these seats and not be able to have the tools and the power to be able to control our own community. And so, I, I say all this in very, in frustration. And if there is a, anyone from the state listening to this, which I highly doubt, I just want them to know that I expect them to do better.
We do share your frustration, Mayor Pro Tem. It's been pretty effective for us and so, but, but it is what it is.
Yes, sir.
And Mayor Portugal and at the time Mayor Pro Tem Hughes had issued a letter to the legislators requesting that they not do this, but unfortunately, they did not listen.
What is the current curfew?
Basically, during the week, it's from eleven PM to six AM. On Friday and Saturday night, it's midnight to six AM. Of course, there are some exceptions in there. If your school activities or if you're coming home from a late job or something like that.
What age?
It's under age, under seventeen, sixteen and under, basically.
So, if somebody is having, like if I'm, if I'm, if my child is having a party at a venue and it lasts till twelve on a Thursday night, then we're breaking curfew, right?
Well, there's some exceptions in there. Like I said, if you're with your parents at a party or at a function, you know, we kind of use our judgment in there when, when we deal with these ordinances. Like, for instance, this year, to date, we've, we've done twenty-five violation notices. And that's basically just contacting the parents and saying, hey, he's in violation of ordinance and, and, you know, you need to, need to, you know, keep him home and not let him violate the ordinance. And, and that works pretty effectively because going back to twenty nineteen, the follow-up to that is, of course, issuing tickets on subsequent violations. So, going back to twenty nineteen to date, we've only had, I think, like six citations. So, it's been pretty effective for us.
Any further discussion? Will you hear a motion?
I make a motion to repeal the chapter eight, article eight point zero two, curfew for children, including sections eight point oh two, oh three one through eight oh two oh three nine.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, seven zero. Item number seventeen, discuss an act on the ordinance of the city council of the City of Paris, Texas, removing the no parking zone on the east side of Second Street, Southwest from the Austin Street, Sherman Street, Austin Street to Sherman Street, excuse me. Staff.
This item was brought to our August first Traffic Commission meeting by the Main Street Coordinator, Mr. Bedford, regarding removal of these no parking zones. I will add that the, the Traffic Commission did unanimously request that y'all consider this, removing those. And Ms. Bedford is here tonight. She's got some information to add to it.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. So, the farmer's market has been expanding. We are utilizing almost all of our parking all the time. And sometimes we have vendors that are looking for a place to park besides where the customer is gonna park. And so, about six years ago, maybe five, Second Southwest, which is on the west side of the farm market square, changed from a one-way street going southbound to two-way. And so, that really made it open up more on that, that row closest to the farmer's market. It makes it easier. So, when the traffic is going out of town on First Southwest, you can u around, you can go back up Second, which opens up the parking on that right side of Second Street. Parking was always on the left. And so, we're just asking if we could flip that over from one side to the other. There happens to be a lot more parking spaces on that east side of Second Southwest. It makes it a lot easier for the vendors to park there. And, and sometimes we have nonprofits that come and they bring a lot of people. So, that opens that up and leaves our customer parking for the customers. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Bedford.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Will you hear a motion?
I move that we approve the ordinance amending the traffic control map, removing the no parking zone as recommended.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Item number eighteen, discuss an act on the ordinance of the city council of the City of Paris, Texas, reducing the speed limit from thirty miles per hour to twenty miles per hour on East Sherman Street between Twelfth Southeast to Fourteenth Southeast Street. Staff.
This was an item brought to the Traffic Commission at the request of our city engineer. He's gonna come up here in just a second and make his presentation. But I may add that they did vote four oh to, to consider reducing the speed limit.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Honorable Members of Council. I would like to submit for your approval, the speed limit reduction from thirty miles an hour to twenty miles an hour on East Sherman Street between Twelfth Street Southeast and Fourteenth Street Southeast. I have a short presentation, if it's possible, to download it in here. I apologize for the lateness of the presentation. But overall, this is adjacent to the Kroger loading dock. A lot of loading trucks at twenty-four hours a day. It could be at any time. And we've also noticed that the, the, thank you very much. Just one moment. Thank you. The length of the street is seven hundred and forty-five feet approximately from Twelfth to Fourteenth. And the housing authority there, there's no sidewalks, as evident around most of the town of, as I've noticed. But-
Hey, Todd.
Yes, Mr. Sir.
Why don't you come to take the keyboard? You can go through yourself, just use arrows.
So, this is looking forth, south, along Fourteenth Street. On the right side, you'll see the Kroger parking lot. Where that no parking sign is, I think would be a great place for a speed limit twenty miles an hour sign. So, as folks are driving south, they have, can follow proper speed for that ninety-degree turn. There's no reason to go thirty miles an hour around that turn. It's not safe as it is there. This is looking west toward the Kroger parking, Kroger loading dock. And on the left, you'll see the housing authority. This is looking east from Twelfth Street Southeast. So, you have a relatively narrow street with parking on both sides, is legal on both sides. But, and only seven hundred and forty-five feet, there's no reason to be going thirty miles an hour. In fact, if you get up to thirty, you better start slowing down because you're gonna hit the stop sign or that ninety-degree turn. There's some off-road backing damage from the Kroger parking lot, from the Kroger loading dock. And in my small investigation out there, I noticed there's a truck with the mud on its tires still. So, they are using up the entire roadway and somebody driving at thirty miles an hour, they don't, they won't have time to stop. Children playing there as well, et cetera. So, I recommend the speed limit reduction for the following reasons. Lack of sidewalks. There's a ninety-degree curve where Fourteenth Southeast comes and turns. And the proximity to the busy loading and unloading dock from Kroger. There's also the mid-block T-intersection at Thirteenth Southeast. You can see that in the upper center of this picture. And the limited length of the street being seven hundred and forty-five feet, I think it would be, make good sense to lower this, but I present it for your consideration and any questions you might have.
Any discussion?
I appreciate you guys hearing out the, the issue. I know that we'd heard similar to the housing authority having that damage to those trucks. So, thank you for that. I think this will help. I pray that it helps.
Will you hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Item number nineteen, receiver presentation on drainage analysis of the upper bases of the tributaries four and six, Big Sandy Creek. Staff.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Honorable Members of Council, I'd like to talk with you about something I've been working on with other city staff members for the past seven months concerning the tributaries four and six of the Big Sandy Creek. This is, I wanted to open up by saying, this is the first of many investigations of drainage pathways in the city. I've noticed that there's a lot of room for improvement throughout the city, but this is the first place that, that we're taking in-depth look. So, in two thousand sixteen, well, first of all, I'll go back a little bit. The City of Paris was built perched on, on the divide of two great watersheds. To the north of downtown roughly, water runs to the north to the Red River. And south of downtown roughly, water runs south to the Sulfur River. As the city has developed, drainage challenges have come to the forefront. This presentation details both tributaries of the Big Sandy Creek. And they stretch from approximately west of Nineteenth Street, northeast to east of North Collegiate near Pine Mill Road. What, what came about was, to bring this to my attention, was the two major flood events occurring in two thousand sixteen, which since then brought about an engineering study by Cobb Finley that you've, you've heard many, many things about from concerned citizens as if I. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about that today. Studies were performed by engineering consultants and we really would like to try to find a good fix for these issues. Here's a rough drainage analysis of the basin that I'm talking about. It's kind of hard to see with the, the photos, but many of these photos are in my presentation here today. In the upper left, that is approximately Twentieth and East Cherry Street. Exactly. Thank you, sir. And on the upper right, in the blue portion there, is North Collegiate and up near Pine Mill Road. So, this is a small pictorial tour of Tributary Four. This is on Twenty-first Northeast, just north of East Cherry Street. And this is a typical drainage section that, that we have throughout the city of surface water flowing onto the street into the curb and gutter section and then winding its way to a creek in some manner. We have a lot of surface drainage. It's coming from different parts of the country. It's unusual that, that a city would have, rely on so much surface drainage. It's normal to go into a submerged sewer system of pipes between twelve inch and sixty inches in diameter to handle flows. But it is, in the state of Texas, with such, with such intense rainfall that we see such short amounts of time, I can see why this was a common practice. And in my opinion and one of my goals that I'm gonna bring to you as we progress with the Paris Development Code and other ordinance change recommendations, that we kind of move away from just the surface drainage model and go towards the submersible drainage. It's better for the, the, the city residents as a, as a whole, for the most part, to have catch basins and just not to see a river in the roadway every time it rains. It comes to mind when we had a storm this summer and I was driving by HTO and the, the entire lane was covered with a river coming down. And that's actually in this, in Tributary Six, in this, that area. But that's unusual. You don't see that in a lot of, in a lot of towns. So, I think we have some room for improvement. As the water flows on, down on East Cherry, the, the picture on the left is standing on East Cherry looking south. It, it goes through several dirt and concrete debris line ditches. This, the picture on the right is from the north end of Wade Park looking north. So, it's, and those little bulbous drainage, the retaining wall are sacks of concrete somebody's built up themselves, which is actually a pretty good way of building a retaining wall on a budget, is to just buy sacks of concrete and stack them there because they will cure and they're there for, for the duration. But it's, it's not a beautiful channel, but it actually functions quite well here, hydraulically. It's, as I've talked with Public Works, it's not the biggest problem we have, even though it's not the prettiest channel in the world. But it's, it's able to come through. One of my recommendations later in the presentation is that we have a regular maintenance program to clean these out. So, you can see in the, the picture on the left, that, the gray wedge, that's a portion of their driveway that they partially filled in the channel so that they could have a slightly larger backing area for their driveway. I want to cut down on those. I want to make that, eliminate those from the, the picture here. There's also, I didn't get a picture for this presentation, but on MLK Drive, we have a channel, it's outside of the drainage zone, but lots of concrete rubble just dumped and dumped into the channel to get rid of it. And although, if it had been done little by little along, it probably would have helped to prevent erosion, but all of it at once, what it does is it forces the channel to go around and scour out somebody else's property. Another thing that, that I've noticed is, in the city here, we don't have a lot of drainage easements for these large channels. And so, one of our goals moving forward is when we get a request to maintain a drainage channel that's not on our property, we want to get those easements in place because it's to the benefit of the resident, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole to have the right to be there as a city. We do have, we do have an emergency right to go through any drainage channel if it's dammed up and fix the blockage, no matter what, within reason. If, let's say, somebody completely blocked a channel and we knew a storm was coming, or even if we didn't, we could go on, through the channel, remove that without an easement. But that usually doesn't happen. It's, it's not common. So, as we, as I turn around from that concrete sack retaining wall I showed you, this is the channel at Wade Park. In this green area here, below the trees, that's the old natorium where the, a natural stream once existed, or a natural aquifer, what was it? It was a, a natural aquifer to fill the channel to allow folks to play in and the kids to wade. So, a natorium is a wading pool, basically. And later on in my, my presentation, I proposed to build a- And later on in my, my presentation, I proposed to build a overflow basin here to store up as much water as we can to prevent downstream flooding from being as bad as it currently is. As you move south, there's a smaller concrete, a smaller concrete line channel at the Belcrust Apartments. So the, the channel here upstream is larger than the downstream channel. So that doesn't make sense hydraulically. And looking back at historical records for this area, and also as it flows south toward the Paris Family Dental, the, this, we have aerial photographs from the nineteen sixties that show this channel being right where it is. So I have little reason to believe this has been greatly improved since the sixties, maybe even the fifties. And there's a whole lot of development upstream of here that has contributed a lot more runoff to these sections. As the, the water flows through Tributary Six, or Tributary Four to the south, there's a box culvert. Tex dot owns this box culvert under Lamar Avenue. And I know it was overtopped at least twice in two thousand and sixteen, as I'll later talk about the events in the spring of that year. And I've personally seen it twice in two thousand and twenty-three to be overtopped, once in March and once in June. So I know it probably has been overtopped between those years too, but those are the only instances I have. As, for Tributary Six, it's a different portion of the, but the same tributary system. This is upstream north of Culbertson Street. And in the early nineteen nineties, this was reconstructed to be a wider channel. This comes from the North Collegiate area and runs to the south, towards South Collegiate. So it's a pretty good sized channel there. Immediately to the south of that, as I turn the camera around, this is a smaller channel on the south of Culbertson Street. And you can see the erosion that's happened so far this year. The, the homeowners there have tried their best to, to, to cope with flooding. They've been flooded often, at least twice in two thousand and sixteen, they were flooded. And I know they were flooded this year as well. But one of the, their request is that we widen this channel like they widen this channel. And there's several reasons we could, there's the reasons we should look closer before we do. But I think a lot of channels in the city could be widened if money were no object and everybody would be happier. As you go around this bend to the right, this is the, the similar channel. You can see the tree erosion, or the tree damage to the V-shaped sections that approximately nineteen forties or fifties, based on some other data I have in another part of town, is probably when these were built. And these trees being allowed to grow through this area, while beautiful, they are very difficult to maintain, expensive to remove at this point because a crane is needed. And there's several thousand dollars just to remove one tree. And it's beyond the budget of the average homeowner to, to be expected to do that. It's, it's very difficult. As you get down towards Twenty-Sixth Street Southeast, you, they do have a slightly larger channel as we move toward the confluence of both tributaries four and six. And this is the, the, flowing toward the bridge as you see it on South Collegiate, going towards Clarksville Street. So one of my recommendations is to look at the sizing of this, even though it looks large. If we build up, if we widen this to a proper width, we could flood these homes worse. So each different reaction we have has different consequences that we have to look at. And although I'd love to just be able to widen everything, it's not, not able to, to happen without careful consideration. And one of my six recommendations, we can look at these more effectively at a better budget level than what Cobb Finley, who did an excellent engineering report, but maybe come in for a lower figure than what they determined. This is the combined tributaries from South Collegiate. This is after that bridge. And this is, is not at capacity, but it's a little bit larger event this spring. So in response to the, the two thousand and sixteen flood events, the city sponsored the study from the Cobb Finley engineers in Frisco. And they observed in their report that on, between April thirtieth and May tenth, approximately eleven point five three inches of rain fell with a short gap in between to spell that. But when the city, or when the, the Sulfur River was flowing at that time, it was already close to flood stage. So it's kind of like the perfect storm of nowhere for the water to go. So unfortunately, it just came up and flooded dozens of homes in Paris. This was characterized by the media as a five hundred year event, which means there's a zero point two chance of this occurring annually. So contrary to popular belief, a five hundred year storm doesn't just happen every five hundred years. Or a one hundred year storm, which is a one percent recurrence interval every year, doesn't just happen once every hundred years. It could happen once this year and once next year. But statistically, it's, it's only a one percent chance of occurring. So our, and this is not local media, this is nationwide, worldwide. They're calling things hundred year storms and five hundred year storms gives a false sense of security for when things really could happen. But I like to use the common nomenclature because that's what we have and that's what people understand. Part of the analysis at the time, the events was, since it was at flood stage, the restriction on the water from having any storage downstream made the flooding worse in Paris. Cobb Finley did a channel, a kind of a channel widening and culvert improvement and came up with approximately ten point two million dollars, and this is in two thousand and eighteen dollars, to fix the problem. And anytime you build a bigger bathtub, you need to build a bigger drain too. So you have to build, you have to come in from the lower end of the watershed and build your way up. You can't do a lot of things upstream and have a lot of effectiveness. But there are some things you can do upstream to help a little bit. They also talked about LiDAR and survey data to analyze hundred year flood plains in our area and adjust flood maps. This is something they talked about. Part of my recommendations were to explore expanding sizes of some channels in strategic locations. This is an example of an excellent job Public Works did to use city forces, which I think are going to be key in, in our, our fight against this. City forces to expand from the downstream up. And also where erosion has, has happened throughout the city in an uncontrolled fashion, to, to reinforce the banks, keep people's property from just flowing away. But one of the effective methods they use is you use these large concrete blocks that you see. They're approximately thirty to fifty dollars apiece. Set these on the side, excavate out part of the embankment, set these down. And they're not going away without, if they're set properly. So in this case, you could see how it's far outside of the thouweg of the, the river channel, which is the main river flowing area, that the concrete block can't get scoured behind. Some methods would be to set this back into the bank, kind of taper it back. But if we do this and, and expand the channels out, we, we can give a larger area for flow. Also to clean out channels of significant obstacles and debris. This is a location here off of South Collegiate near the apartments that, that is kind of in need of a little bit of, of excavation of current materials. They did a great job on the outside of this. And I think it, one of their future goals, if they get time, is to be able to further expand on the right side of this. But this is actually flowing pretty well in this location. The, the apartments aren't losing ground anymore. And this is an effective method in other parts of town. Another recommendation is to build detention ponds or overflow basins in key parts of, in key locations. I've been in, in touch with Dr. Del Toro at Paris Family Dental. Really appreciate if he's here today. Appreciate his, his openness in talking about the two thousand and sixteen events. And he's actually offered part of the back part of his lot to be used so that we can, with city forces or contracted forces, to open up a larger area. So when the floods come, this can be, this can fill. This can meter out at a more controlled rate and slow down the flooding downstream or hopefully reduce it, but at least slow down the flows that are currently uncontrolled. But once the, the event is over, the, the design will in effect empty the bathtub. So it'll, instead of being flowing hot and heavy for three hours full and into his parking lot, it would have a larger area for storage. And then in six or seven hours, it would finally drain and help to have more capacity built into the system. There's another, the other area I talked about is at Wade Park, we could put a, a larger one in there too. These, I want to look at these closer before we pull the trigger on them. But the, there are a lot of other areas around town. There's, there's been a couple of different folks that have contacted me about donating their parcels of land in different parts of the city. One is one is on East Polk Street of unbuildable lots that have slanted channels flowing right through them. That would be excellent choices for doing controlled basins like these. That they won't collect mosquitoes because they'll theoretically flow out when, when maintained properly. But when we need them during those heavy rains, they'll be there for us. The other three recommendations were utilizing city staff to perform this work as possible. So that's a general term for all the other five. But continuing proper enforcement of drainage detention through our subdivision ordinances and improve ordinance language where necessary. I wish I had time to put a, put the slide together on this. But overall, the best language we have in our current ordinances is providing flow control for a twenty-five year recurrence interval storm. So that is a four percent chance of that storm happening in any given year. And that's the best we have. In similar cities nearby, Denton and Sherman require one hundred year flood, flood release from the properties. And I'm proposing that we immediately increase that to a fifty year instead of the twenty-five. And that's the best we have. That's for current multifamily and apartment housing and commercial for the twenty-five year. So if we bring everybody except single-family residential up to that, then that'll really help everybody out. And also the, this is in the, the proposed city budget that's under your consideration too, but to conduct a LiDAR, LiDAR laser survey citywide to capture existing topography and aid in future studies. For approximately thirty-four thousand dollars, which is what we have submitted in the city budget for LiDAR survey, we can map the entire city in its flight flown by a Cessna aircraft. And they fly in a grid pattern and they just take laser pictures basically. And they can get shots every square meter, approximately the size of this desk right here. They get eight shots on the laser. And when I was in college surveying, I'd be lucky to get a rod shot every ten square meters in some locations because it took so much time. You can't get eight shots per square meter and not take months to do a topography map you might have a day to do. So we can instantly have eight shots per square meter around the city. It's raw data. It will take some, some focused tabulation and processing. But there's also some consultant money for that. And my, one of my goals is my engineering staff and I can help process that data too. But it'll be public data that all the surveyors can have access to. They're not going to be able to afford to fly the city for laser survey. But if we provide that for them and any survey that's doing business here, it helps everybody out. It would also help in one of Cobb Finley's recommendations of being able to remap some of the hundred year flood plains. In one of the early maps here, we have a blue shaded area. This blue shaded area is the hundred year flood plain as shown in FEMA's two thousand and eleven flood maps. In some areas, those are not accurate because the, a lot of this data was taken from the nineteen seventies. And they looked at it a little bit in some areas in two thousand and eleven and called it an update. But it's really, needs to be refocused. So if, if anybody wants to challenge the hundred year flood plain in their backyard, they will have that data and their surveyor will have that data to be able to do so. So that's my, my overview. And I'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
Are you in discussion?
Quick question. So I've heard a lot about the flooding. Is Paris Family Dental the only structure north of Lamar that is flooded that you're aware of?
I believe that some folks on East Cherry have been flooded, including this house on the right. I'm pretty sure that was flooded too. So I do not believe they're the only ones.
Thank you.
Todd, these, this analysis was done on tributaries four and six, right?
Yes, sir.
In southeast and northeast Paris, right? So do we have any, did we do any analysis all over Paris? Or is that pretty much primary where we have the flooding issues in East Paris?
We have lots of flooding all over Paris. And that's my goal is to be able to get everywhere. But
So we're starting here?
We're starting here and just going where, where we can with an in-depth look as we have issues.
I was going to add some context. Just, just to set the clock back on this. As you recall, back in January or so, we had a P and Z item that came to council for a development project on Twentieth and Cherry, I believe is what it was. Some citizens living in that area came expressing concerns about flooding there. And Dr. Del Toro was one of those who came, and then as well as Sharon Malone, Reeves Hader, and a few others. So that was, there was a lot of, lot of attention at that time. So the city council directed that, that we look into that. So again, the focus being Tributary Four, that went on to Six. And so, but we, we knew that this is just a start. Again, that was the squeaky wheel and that, that first started this process here. But as, I like to say, the Cobb Finley report was for Tributary Four. It was estimated about ten million dollars. It doesn't include Tributary Six, let alone the other tributaries we have in town. So these are, these are very expensive projects here. But we, we do feel, as, as, as Mr. Mitke put in his report here, that, that we, we hope that these recommendations are, are designed to help alleviate. We cannot guarantee you will not be flooded. If you live in the flood plain, that's a reality, unfortunately. I wish that was not the case, but, but it's a reality. And so, and, and we can't prevent flooding. However, what we hope to do, using the funds that we're given by the taxpayers, is try to alleviate some of that through, through measures like Mr. Mitke put in there, like cleaning out existing drainage ways, removing debris obstacles. And I once witnessed a mattress that blocked the, the Clarksville Street culvert there next to the police station. So there's a mattress and a dumpster was actually blocking it too. So, so we are working to try to clean that junk out. And one nice thing, talking, talking to Mr. Smith, our Public Works Director before the meeting, in, in recent years, we've been so understaffed in Public Works. We've been fortunate to just be able to manage water breaks. Well, we now have enough staff in the Water and Sewer Department that we can run two crews. We have in budget proposals in your, in your budget packets to, to, to equip these two crews to both work independently. That will then free up our CIP department, which is a very skilled, very independent department that, that can go and do a lot of skilled jobs. We hope to put more to work on doing some cleanup. And recently, because of low staffing, they've had to do a lot of water main breaks, which are top priorities. But now with having staffing up, having equipment coming on the way, we should be able to use that crew to help get to work on some of these drainage issues. Again, we have a lot of requests across town. We're not going to try to focus just here. Not just drainage, we have other requests that have to be focused on too. But, but we do hope using those crews helps start to alleviate here. But again, as to Mr. Savage's point and to Mr. Mitke, we want to, we need to expand. We can't just focus just on this area. There's other tributary areas with other complaints we get. But this was, again, this was the context. This is the starting point. To get this report was that P and Z city council item to get us thinking and going on this.
Yes, but, but to that point, and I was referring to that meeting that you brought up, Mr. Path, I think Mr. Pilgrim and myself made the point, you know, we had so many people coming up talking about one specific area. But we made the point that it's flooding all over Paris. I have flooding in my area as well, southeast, far southeast. So we just want to make sure that we're looking at everything.
Thank you so much. And if there's any specific areas that y'all have or any member of the public has, I'd love to hear them so that I can add them to my list of, of places to look at. So after the meeting, please catch me. Yes, sir.
On your last picture, can you put your last picture up?
Yes.
Okay, right, go ahead. Okay. That's quite good. That's my backyard.
Okay.
That culvert there is eroded out. So through, through that backyard, through the side of my house and then my neighbor's backyard is one of those easements that you're talking about. But it, it has eroded. I have a whole I have a hole this big that I can't even pour my, my mole back there to mow anymore.
Mr. Hughes, could you come up to the mic and state your name and address, please, sir?
Derek Hughes, 750 28th Southeast. So with that, that, the type of easement you're talking about, it's one there that goes all the way to 28th Street, but it's eroded all the way through. It's like five major holes there. Now, in my very front yard, when I first moved there last June, MA sent, I talked to him, and he sent one of his guys out, and they filled it with dirt, but there's two more big holes right there now.
Sinkholes.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, they're gigantic. If somebody fall in there and no one's there, they're there. That's how deep they are. So, I mean, I don't know if you noticed that when y'all were there, but that's a-
I did. Did you? Yes.
This has been a good exercise for us. We, obviously, Mr. Mitke's our new engineer, so this has been a good, this has been a good opportunity to get to know the basins we have, the flows we have, what our staff capabilities are, the history here, getting to know the Cobb Finley report was, was a big advantage for him to get to know that. So I think we've, we've helped equip our engineer and our staff with some knowledge here that we hope to start expanding out to hit other areas. But yes, please, if anyone's listening to my voice, if you know of issues, please forward it on to us and so we can start identifying the issues and start planning modes of attack. But again, it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of money. So this, this, these are very expensive fixes because as Mr. Mitke put out, pointed out there, what, what may look like a fix to you and your, and your residents may flood someone else downstream. So this is not just solved here, it solves everywhere between here and edge of the city. This, this has to be carefully planned out so not to cause problems downstream. Because one of the things that we have to be careful, the city liability-wise, is we don't want to do work that causes problems. That, that's a liability issue there. We can't be held responsible for flooding happens at your house unless we cause the problem, unless we actually do some work that, that creates the problem there. So we have to be very careful to plan these out so that we don't cause a flooding event. So that's right, Ms. Harris, so.
No, it's not.
Good. You're right. So, yeah.
Is the Corps of Engineers or any federal governing body on any of, on any of these waterways that we're talking about, tributaries that we're talking about, that we'd have to, I guess, if we were going to make big changes, that we would have to go through them to approve or anything?
Yeah, large-scale projects, we have a Corps of Engineer review is required.
Okay. I didn't know if they were, there's their blue line.
Maintenance projects, we, we normally don't take the effort to do that. We could, but it's just normal maintenance.
Waters of the U.S. is basically what I'm saying. Like, so like the ditch behind my house is, is our Corps of Engineer. Johnson Woods Drive behind the houses on Johnson Woods Drive, when they redid that one a few years ago, it was a big problem because everybody didn't understand why they didn't go in concrete and fix it like they wanted it, couldn't because our Corps of Engineers was over that because it was a Waters of the U.S.
Exactly.
Blue line stream. Are, are any of these streams in these tributaries that way?
They all are.
Dang.
Yeah, so at the corner of the edge of the blue here, where you see the blue cutoff, that's where the Waters of the U.S. ends to my determining, because from there on, it's just surface, surface street drainage. Or in some cases, like along East Cherry, there is a 48-inch submerged culvert pipe that is not involved in a floodplain.
About halfway up, but, right. You're saying the whole FEMA floodplain is, is within the Corps of Engineers?
The, the channel that, that the floodplain belongs to, but not everywhere in the floodplain, per se.
So there's, there's a designated waterway, I guess.
Yes, exactly. So the, the nodes, the, the lines in here, if you imagine that as the blue line, that's-
Is there not money? Is there not some money, or being that they would be the governing body over that, I wonder if there's any, is there any jurisdictional money for them to have to? I thought that's what happened when we did. Yeah, I thought that's what we did when we redid the one at, the one at Johnson Woods happened like right when I got on the council. Chris Donan and them at Hader did it, and I don't have to ask, I don't remember. He lives on it, too. And there, there was a big deal because there was a bunch of houses got flooded right through there, and they, they had to go in and do a clean out, and they did a grass patch or something. But I think there was some money brought in from the federal government, I thought, to help with some of that. It was pretty expensive.
I'm open to any and all external fund sources, especially FEMA. I know they have the large-scale projects, like Hurricane Katrina-type projects where they have billions they throw in, into the mix there. So a lot of the, the smaller towns don't have access to those large funds, but I'd love to explore that. And the Texas Water Development Board is another one that I do know has funds available now for things like this. So I haven't even told Grayson about that. My contact's at the Water Development Board. We might be able to get some funding there.
And there's also a state initiative, Governor Abbott, following Hurricane, I don't remember which one it is now, but when the hurricanes hit Houston, there was major flooding. I can remember it was-
Harvey.
It was Harvey, okay. And so the Governor Abbott initiated a new, a new study. Reeves Hader is actually chairing our, our section. I know he spoke at Rotary here recently, and the whole point is, is to identify weak points throughout the state for drainage issues. I know we've submitted a few, a few of our proposed projects. There's limited funds through this thing. There will be funding here, but it's primarily for studies.
I'm saying past the grant thing, but more like a TechDOT. TechDOT, you know, we have a unique relationship with TechDOT where they have streets and roads within the city of Paris, and they maintain their streets and roads within the city of Paris. If we can't legally change or, or alter our drainage issues that we, that we deem that are true issues within the community that we want to spend money on, then they need to do it.
Yeah, there, there's one, I'm thinking like on Lamar Avenue there at, at the Family Dental, I've, that is a TechDOT road, and so I'm, I haven't talked to Mr. Mitke about this just yet, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there may be possibility of working with TechDOT to, I don't, I'm not an engineer, I don't add another culvert under there, I don't know, but just something to give it some capacity, some flow capacity through there. But yeah, there's, there are things that we, that we'll start exploring for funding sources and partnerships. But a lot of this is going to fall back on us and our taxpayers to ultimately foot the bill, so we'll have to, that's where, because lots of communities, I worked, this is my third community, lots of communities have flooding issues, and so there's always so much dollars, and, and, and we're not the only ones that deal with this, so.
I think the Waters of the U.S. thing is, is the only thing that made it unique in the last, what, five years that we've even had to really deal with that. That was an Obama-era, era law, but was passed on and passed on, and now they've kind of actually pulled some of the pieces out of it. Technically, the kind of drainage within a, that's a waterway, more or less. Now, there's exemptions in some standpoints in agriculture and other things that they can't control that, but they do control these, so I'm wondering if they're, you know, if they're going to control it and they're going to make us do that. I mean, I wonder if there's not a legal standpoint that you could say, hey, you know, y'all foot the bill.
Well, state and federal are happy to give unfunded mandates, so.
I get it.
They were, they were the curfew here recently.
But I mean, this is a, this is a unique deal. I mean, it's, it's new, so that's kind of wondering, wondering what, what we, you know, what happens.
Thank you. Those are great points, everybody.
So, so Clayton, you said less than six years ago, we did some type of initiative to clean out somewhere in East Paris, right? Johnsonwood area or something like that?
Stephanie, there was a, the ditch went from what?
It was, it was related to putting a sewer line underneath it. It was part of the water and sewer bond package. That's where that money came from. And as a part of that, they, they worked shoring up that it wasn't a drainage project, per se. It was a construction of the water and sewer.
New sewer line, that's what it, yeah. They, they went in and put it in.
Right.
They had some problems with it. There were some, there were some, I remember Mr. Nash and a couple others, because when I first got on the council, they were bombarding me, and I said, I don't even know what you're talking about. I knew the construction project was there, but they went in and fixed it, but whenever they went to fix it, they were like, we want to concrete it, make it where it can't, where it's there forever.
Yeah.
And they couldn't, they had to go by the guidelines of the federal government on what they could do.
My, my point to that, though, is, you know, we, we did something less than six years ago in East Paris, and now we're starting with East, East Paris again. So my point to that is people in East Paris are more likely to call, you know, you were talking about the complaints, call, let you know, you know, so you can have data. But people in East Paris are more likely to call, especially in Johnsonwood and places like that, they're more likely to call the city and complain than some people in West Paris because of socioeconomics, that's, I don't even have to go through that. The studies show that people that's more, that has more money is more likely to call and complain to the city than people who are in poverty areas. So that's, that doesn't mean that there are problems in West Paris, but it could be, but people are not calling. So my, my point is, we should be looking all over, and I know y'all are, but I just want to make the point because we are elected here as the voice of the people. So I'm making that, I'm speaking out on behalf of some of the people that don't feel comfortable coming up here and talking or calling you, or some people might say, well, I can complain, but nothing's going to happen. So, and, and we, we can't put a head in the sand. We know that happens. We know people are like that, but they have the same phone number, but everybody's not going to call because they don't think their voice carries any weight. So I, I'm just making the point that we need to make sure that we're doing an analysis all over the city because flooding is all over the city. So we need to complain. I, I mean, we need to focus on all of the complaints or even people that might not complain but might have serious issues in their area. I know that Mr. Pankins is hit very hard in his area in West Paris, and I know with other issues as well, and so am I. So just making sure that these people's voices are heard because we talk a lot, we're saying a lot about the money that it costs. Well, everybody's paying tax dollars, but I think some people just feel like they're not getting the same bang for the buck. So, and, you know, we talked about, and the reason I'm saying that, because we brought the point up that so many people came up and complained, and they were all from East Paris. So some other people, you know, a doctor and, and people that's lived in neighborhoods for years, but some other people might not have the courage to come up and speak on behalf of, of the issue that's, that they're seeing, but they, it doesn't mean that the issue doesn't exist.
Absolutely, and I'd love to hear any comments folks have. Is it all ready? She, she speaks. On open forum? Yeah. Open forum.
About the flooding in West Paris? I have a sister house that's flooded twice in Northwest Paris, Northwest Paris. What does it do about Northwest Paris? I'm always hearing, I'm hearing you talk, speak about East Paris. What about West Paris? You mentioned West Paris. What about Northwest Paris? Have we done anything there? Are we going to do anything there? When you say all over Paris, are we speaking of Northwest Paris also?
What street does she live on, man?
1145 Northwest 8.
Northwest 8, okay. Thank you.
It flooded real bad in 2017. Real, real bad in 2017, real bad.
Thank you.
And they did it again about two years ago. She's not one, she's not one to call either. I will. Or I do.
I think, sorry, just to add to, to kind of discuss a little bit more on what Mr. Savage has kind of discussed, I think, I think that LiDAR portion is going to help tremendously. LiDAR has, man, that technology has really blown up. And so for us to be able to have that opportunity in our community, not only from a community standpoint, but from a commercial development, from, I mean, from all sorts of opportunities, I believe that LiDAR is, is the future for, for problems like this, to be able to map that out. And so I'm, I'm excited, but I think that having that technology, and especially, I'm glad you included that in the budget process, but having that, that, that capability to be able to map that out is tremendous. I, I was very excited to see that, so I appreciate that. But I believe that that will help us on all quadrants, no matter where you are in the community, that's going to help us. And especially to do a 50-year, 100-year, a simulation, if you will, based off of the mapping. I'm, I'm very excited about that process.
And one thing I was concerned with, with that, is that it's easier for folks that have access to pay a surveyor to now analyze the data. One of my goals as a city engineer and my staff is for us to be able to analyze that data pinpointed when we get a call, let's say, from 1145 Northwest 8th Street, to be able to see her, her raw data and plug that into the, the calculation so that we get the true tax dollars and a direct effect quickly. It's difficult to pay a consultant $5,000 to do one thing that we could train ourselves to do in-house for funds that we're already getting paid. So that's one of my goals in the engineering department.
And don't think I'm griping. I'm just bringing, making points, trying to, anyway.
Appreciate all your comments. And any other questions?
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 20, discussing appoint three members to the Texas increment reinvestments on board tiers and appoint one council member to serve at the council liaison. Staff?
Okay. At the June 26 council meeting, it was determined that we didn't have a sufficient number of applicants to fill the tiers board, so you all asked the city staff to re-advertise. We did that. We now have a total of six applicants. There's three vacant positions. If you all are ready to move forward, there's ballots before you. You can mark your ballots, and I'll pick them up. Remember to mark your number one choice as the person with the most points.
Just now saw this. Okay, I'll take these in here to rob, and over here.
It's too much today. Man. Oh, I'm off my case today. I'm off my case today. You're doing fine. It's a dense meeting. Once I redo this, then I'll go down and let most of them know they don't have to stay here. Stuff happens.
Okay. The three people receiving the most points are Brandon Bell, Maureen Hammond, and Cody Had.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that again?
Yes, I'm sorry. Brandon Bell, Maureen Hammond, and Cody Had received the highest points.
Okay, I hear a motion to appoint the three applicants who receive the largest number of points to the tiers board.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, no. Motion carries, 7-0. Next, we'll need a volunteer from the council liaison to serve on the tiers board.
Mayor, I would, I would love the opportunity. I know I missed out on, on- Mayor, I would, I would love the opportunity. I know I missed out on, on, um, the first round. Need a family emergency, but I would, I've been interested in this. I'd love to be able to opportunity, if the council will have me.
I make the motion that we, I make the motion that we, uh, put Mahir Ponkis, Council Member Mahir Ponkis, as the, uh, council liaison to the tiers board.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-one, convenience executive session pursuant to, A, section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas government code, consolation with attorney, to receive legal advice from the city attorney about, one, pending or completed litigation and/or two, on matters in which the duty of the attorney to her client under the Texas disentery rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflict with this chapter. B, section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas government code to liberate to purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in deliberation in opening meeting would be, have detrimental effect on the position of the government body in the negotiations within third person. The time is...
Six fifty-six.
Six fifty-six P.M. The city council is convening the executive session.
Thank you.
You can do whatever you want. It's awesome. I've got the budget on here. I've got everything set.
Now they have...
Item number 22, reconvening to open session and possibly take action on those matters discussed in executive session. Time is 7:30 PM and city council is now in open session. No action required. Item number 23, considering approved for future events for the city council and our city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004.081. Does anyone have anything?
I've just got one thing that we might have to look at, and I can't remember. It's been three or four months ago when we, it came across our, the council, where the pool business wanted to put advertisement up, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we established that they had to have a business there, right? To be able to advertise on that corner of 20th and the Loop, you know, the, the ramp to the Loop.
Yes.
So they have pools up now like advertisement, but there's no business there.
Well, that'll need to be referred to staff to check it out.
Okay, okay. Well, okay then. I didn't, that's why you're here. I didn't know. But I just want to look into that.
Yeah, I mean that would be a violation, so.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
We'll get back with y'all.
All right, thank you.
All right, our motion to adjourn.
Totally.
Second. We adjourn.